I'd like to remind everyone, put your phones on vibrator and cut them off. This meeting of the Gadsens City Council will now come to order under Chair calls on City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we just thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We thank you for life. We thank you for this beautiful day that you have made. God, I pray that you will give wisdom and knowledge today and direction to this council as they make these very important decisions that will affect this great city. We pray for the mayor and his administration, God, as he continues to lead. God, we just pray that you'll be with all of these who are in attendance here today. Thank you for their participation in city government. And God, as we prepare to recognize and honor our veterans in a few days, God, we just pray that you'll continue to keep your hand of protection on our servicemen and women all around the world as they provide the cover of protection and the freedom by which we stand here today. And we'll give you the honor and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While you go.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting on November the first.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of October the 28th through November the 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor. Unfinished business, we have none today. Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 414 Turntown Avenue in District 5, Mary Del Loman Meyer being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sure anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in March of this year. There've been no improvements to the property. There was a building permit taken out in June. There's been no work done on that permit. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Let me answer a question someone asked me about this is how long will it take this procedure to get underway? It's just a matter of days, is that right? Brian?
Right. We're anticipating providing rehab and not demolition on this particular case. So we'll go through the process of writing the specifications, sending those out, and bidding that out. Normally that process will take about four weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Number 10, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering petitioning Etowah County Commission for approval for a medical waste facility to be located at 1409 Springfield Avenue at the existing Quality of Life Medical Clinic site. Willie Duncan doing business as MedClean plans to purchase a medical waste sterilizer and boiler system to recycle and sterilize waste before it is placed in a landfill. The Etowah County Solid Waste Management Plan requires the city's approval before the county can consider it. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? I'm sure we have a lot out there, but I'll entertain three, no more than three. Whoever wants to be first, come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Mr. Harris, Mayor, fellow community. I...
State your name and address.
I'm Sandra Pointer. I'm getting to that. I'm just a little too...
Oh, okay.
I have to go slow. I live in the Green Pastors area. I was born and raised there. I love that community. Wouldn't for no reason, no way turn my back on it. I could've moved and lived somewhere else, but I chose to stay there because it's a good place. I'm here this morning to let you and Wayne Rowe know, this is not a dumping ground. You see, the garbage transfer station was put over there on the Lower Inn of Paradise, not far from where we are. Nothing was done about that. You have the aluminum recycling place up there at the top of the pasture there. We're getting dumped on from that, and nobody's doing anything about this. Now here it comes again. When does it end? Where does it stop? When do we say enough is enough? Well, I'm here to say that is today. We're not going to allow it, I don't care if it's no emission. Why would you want to put something like this in a community next to a playground, city-owned playground and ball field? I raise my children to play outside, and my grandchildren are coming along the same way. They don't sit in the house and play video games all day. We're outside. We don't want this dump. If Wayne wants it, rent him a building on his property or a room in his house.
You didn't state your name and address.
Yes.
Well, I didn't hear it.
Sandra Pointer, P-O-I-N-T-E-R. I live on Lula Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
State your name and address, please, ma'am.
I will. My name is Charlie Jean Jenkins, and I live at 1603 Paradise Avenue. And I am here in opposition of the medical facility cleanup, whatever. Mayor Guyton, members of the City Council, Mr. President, I'm here to oppose the medical waste facility, and I have lived on Paradise Avenue for some 38, 39 years. I was here a few years ago when you put the dump, the landfill, the entering landfill, that I was not supposed to know that it was back there. Well, I can assure you that I know it's back there. Every time I look out my back door, it's back there. The representative from Keystone was here and did not oppose it. Well, Keystone is gone, but the dump is still there. It is bigger and it looks like a mountain. And what I'm trying to tell you is that these buildings come into the community, these plants come into the community, and they leave. And we're over there and we're stuck with it. We have to live there. We are a community that have families of children and grandchildren. Now you want to put this medical facility in our yards. It's a business in a residential area. It's near a public park and a ball field. It's been stated that it was low hazardous, but how do we know? We don't know what it's going to do until years later. We don't know what health issues will come from this medical facility being over there. And all I can say is that it seems that we are a community that pays taxes, but we don't have a voice. And all I want to say, Mr. Mayor, is that I think that we should be considered when things are going to be placed over in our area. We were not even aware of this, and it could've been already taken care of, like the landfill, when I was told it was a done deal, and it was nothing I could do about it. If as much time was spent on developing and improving the Green Pastors area, instead of dumping over there, the whole place would be a lot better, the whole city would be better, and then we could all be said that we are a city of champions. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Edward just kind of up on and addressed something. I wasn't here years ago when all that was done. I found out about this last week when Mr. Harris mentioned it to me. He had just found out, had no knowledge of it, and that's why there's a public hearing today, okay?
Please state your name and address for the City Clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Richard Edwards. I reside at 1135 Glendale Avenue, Gaston, 35903. I am here today to speak in opposition to the concerted waste business, industrial-type business that is being proposed to be placed in a residential district. And those of you who are not familiar with Green Pastors area, I'd just like to share this with you. Where this site is located is virtually in my backyard. I don't want that. We don't need it in our community. I want to object to a business proposal presented by MedClean with proposed location at the site on Springfield Avenue to Mayor Guyton, Guyton, and our City Council. I would like to say to you this morning that as I come before you today, I come to make note of a series of facts that should be considered as the city reviews the requests for this business proposal. We have allowed ourselves to enter discussion on an issue that clearly should not be considered at this time. In fact, as we continue with this process, we are very likely to conclude that this item should not be considered at all. Many present here today, being familiar with the facts surrounding this situation, will, as I do, object to the consideration. You may note that on October 28th, it appeared that on November 1st, there would be an open hearing addressing toxic waste disposal plans presented by Mr. Willie Duncan to be housed at the Quality of Life J.W. Stewart Center for Excellence located on Springfield Avenue. That, of course, never happened. At this time, we, the citizens of Gaston, are being presented with the opportunity to participate in an open discussion and consideration of proposed plans. May I say at this time that I make no claim to be an expert on this subject matter and the many items that must be considered in order to make a wise decision. However, I am indeed a retired health professional, and I've had many years' experience dealing with toxic waste. That was part of my duties and responsibilities in those situations where I was. I've had a bit of experience dealing with these things, and I'm very aware of the critical nature of this issue and the cautious approach that must be taken here. I believe that all of us, no matter who we are, react to and make decisions based on our personal and personal life experiences, as well as what documented history and research that is provided for us. As we meet here today, it is obvious that we, the citizens in this city, have very little information or were provided very little information in the beginning before this thing came to, you know, came before us. My history in the healthcare establishment, where our work required that hazardous materials be safely stored until they could be removed from those healthcare sites and disposed of by a certified, qualified agent. In this case, with minimal information or knowledge of the requester, we are asked to consider an open-end grant, a dangerous thing to do when we consider the minimal information that we have. This request is about moving toxic materials from one facility for the safety of those employed there to a site where other workers or patrons could unknowingly be exposed to that same toxic waste. What a turnaround. What a full circle. In these United States, a facility that stores and disposes of hazardous waste must obtain a permit for doing so under the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act. Generators of and transporters of hazardous waste must meet specific requirements for handling, managing, and tracking waste. Through the R C R A, Congress directed the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, to create regulations to manage hazardous waste. Under this mandate, the EPA developed strong requirements for all aspects of hazardous waste management, including treatment, storage, and disposal of hazardous waste. In addition to these federal regulations, states may develop requirements that may be even more strict than the federal guidelines. So that's something to be considered. And the question is, has anybody on this council or has the proposing agent himself compared any of these things to see what the differences are and how you may be able to fit into that mold? How the city may be able to adjust as it needs to to meet the standards? There are other questions also unanswered at this time, including the fact that a full-service unit of this type will collect waste from many different types of facilities, and therefore many different types of toxic waste will be collected. Have any of these types of facilities been identified? Does anybody have any idea what types of facilities that this waste will be collected from?
I was supposed to tell you you had three minutes. I didn't know that we were going...
I didn't have enough information, so if you'll just give me a couple more minutes, I'll get through here. Have any of the possible items of concern been defined or described by the applicant that are value inherent to decide if the application should be granted any consideration at all? Because of the facts that have been presented here today and the lack of merchant information needed to make a knowledgeable, wise decision, and because of the attempted backdoor entry that was first attempted and followed by another government agency, we propose that no consideration be given to said request. We, the citizens of Gaston, call on our City Council and our mayor to do the right and honorable thing and to reject that request without any consideration at all. Keep in mind that two minority groups will suffer the great downside of considering this request. There's no doubt that the downside will be very huge. Recipients of the downside activity include the employee staff of Quality of Life Health Center, the Hispanic population that is served there, the sickle cell patients who in the future will be addressed at that site, and finally, the residents of that community, the black population that resides there, mostly black citizens, who reside in this longstanding, beloved community. At this time, I request and suggest...
I think you've had enough time, and I think you've got your point made real well.
If you'll give me one minute.
No, you've already done more than I've...
But you didn't give me the information. I would've been through.
But I gave it to you a while ago, and now that's it. I think you've made your point very well, and I think now I'd like to see how many of you people are against this. If you'd please stand, I would...
That was my request. That's the next thing I was going to ask you. Those who agree with me, please stand. And there they are. And there's more than that also.
I'm sure there are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? I'll tell you the three minutes of...
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning to...
And I'll give you equal time. You can speak for the rest of the afternoon.
Well, I won't be long. Good morning to all of you, Mayor Guyton, City Council members, President, as well as the members present for this hearing. My name is Wayne Rowe. I'm CEO for Quality of Life Health Services. We've been around now for about 35 years, providing primary healthcare services to the citizens of Gaston, Etowah County, as well as 12 other counties in the central northeast part of Alabama. We have over 150,000 patients enrolled in our program. We provide primary medical care services out presently 18 sites. We have six locations in Gaston. And we've been here serving the very people, some of the people in the community that are here this morning, and certainly we appreciate the opportunity to serve. And we work very hard to make sure that people we serve have the best of care. And what we have come before the council for this morning is to ask your permission and blessings to provide for the treatment of our medical waste in order to cut our costs. Presently, our medical waste is being provided care by the Stericycle Company. And we are asking for the authorization, which the treatment is through an autoclave unit, is steamed, through an autoclave unit that would be placed at our storage facility at the J.W. Stewart site. It has no toxic waste. I don't know where that come from. It's medical waste. Someone has misinformed the community, but that's okay. I know sometime when you see environmental things come up, people immediately jump to some of the negatives. But this is to provide for our patients, such things as even yourself, when you take a Band-Aid off of a sore or cut at home, it has blood on it. Well, we are not allowed to put blood items of that nature into the regular garbage that goes into the landfill. That has to be sterilized and processed, and that's all this unit, self-contained unit, would do. And Mediclean is the company that would be providing this. We also have with us a representative from the company that would provide the piece of equipment, which is about the size of the desk there before those gentlemen there. And all of the medical waste would be steamed. After steamed and cleaned, then it goes to the landfill. That's required by A D M, and that's all we're asking to do. But we would never do anything to jeopardize or to compromise the health of any citizens. Ironically, we're in the business of taking care of the health of all of our patients. And this is a cost-cutting measure on the part of our company to be able to continue to provide good quality care to our patients. And that's all we ask to do, but certainly we did not propose this project to do any harm to anyone. Everything that we do, we follow the state regulations, we follow national regulations, federal regulations, as well as local city codes and county regulations. However, if this is something that you feel that perhaps would not be in the best interest of the community, we have no problem with that. We still will continue to serve our patients. We still will provide them with good quality medical care. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
And then we vote.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
No.
Mr. President... I would just be curious, how many people might have changed their mind when they hear, have heard both sides of it?
Raise your hand if you change your mind. Okay.
I actually have a question, though. The way that he's saying that once he's steamed, and steam goes up into the air, everybody knows that, but once it's steamed and he goes to dump it into the landfill, is that not going to be dumped into the same landfill that's in his Gaston where we are?
The one that he's supposed to put that in, it goes to Birmingham, too, somewhere in Jefferson County. The landfill that's over there is not the garbage. It's just the limbs and stuff like that, the leaves that comes out of it. We don't put any garbage in that landfill over there. The garbage goes to Jefferson County. You have, if you've ever been out there and seen the operation, they push that stuff off in the trailers and they take it to Jefferson County. So what he has is garbage. It would not go in that landfill.
So it would be taken directly from his facility to Birmingham?
Well, it'll...
Through the transfer station.
Through the transfer station, yes.
So, Mr. President, I think, again, these folks are showing up because they're very concerned about their communities as any of us would be. So I'm not going to pontificate about, you know, the emotional aspects of it. I think they have a very legitimate concern, but I do want to kind of speak to what the mayor said earlier. The mayor spoke to the process and how this was kind of thrown on the council, you know, pretty quickly. I mean, we just first heard about it last week. I think the level of questioning that's out there, in terms of how the process works, what's the true impact, things of those nature, just kind of speaks to the need for this process to at least be encompassing of some level of awareness. And so I think it would be very short-sighted of us, because we may still end up where I think we're headed at the end of the day, but I think there needs to be some awareness impact and some awareness time relative to this issue, because this could be in my district next, and it could be in any of our districts next. And I think as a city, we probably should consider what our path forward is and our plan is any time this issue is raised, so that we don't have to go through this each time this issue is raised. I mean, what other alternatives have been presented? I don't think any other alternatives have been presented. What are the environmental impacts? I can tell you that the city's environmental expert hasn't been consulted and hasn't had an opportunity to chime in on this yet. And of course, these folks haven't been truly educated and made aware of some of the impacts. And, you know, at the very least, they weren't even told that this was about to happen. So, again, I think, with that being said, there is some great opportunity for us to engage the awareness aspect of this. And I'm going to ask that this council... And I, I'm going to ask that this council, and, you know, again, Councilman Avery's not here, he would definitely like the opportunity to chime in. And I'm going to ask that before we rush to any vote relative to this item, that we take the opportunity to engage in some awareness and table this for seven days.
Yeah, I hear you. Yeah, I hear a second.
No.
Okay. Take a roll call.
Mr. President, I-
I think we're still under discussion.
We're still under question, discussion. Well, I think that's, that's a topic that can be addressed, you know. Right now, we have, we, we have a document in front of us that we, we are going to, we are going to vote up or down in this meeting today. The people who are represented here today have made it understood, and, and I, and I can appreciate Mr. Rowe's responsibilities and, and the task that they perform for us. And I appreciate his understanding of the fact that these people who live in Green Pastures, who live in District One, are cognizant of the fact that they do not want it there, and you will understand whether it's waste, garbage, whatever. They've expressed themselves here, and I'm here to say that they need to be listened to and honored.
Well, let me, let me say this, there's a time for our council to lead, and there's a time to listen to your constituents, and I'm hearing your constituents this morning.
Amen.
Call for the vote.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Excuse me. This vote is for adoption of the resolution. Councilman Harris?
No.
Williams?
No.
Councilman Avery is absent. Councilman Echols?
No.
Stewart?
I serve on the planning commission, so I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Abstain. Councilman Cannon?
No.
Reed?
No.
Motion does not carry for adoption.
Thank you.
Okay, number eleven, our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for Jake's Music Room located at 101 Locust Street in District Three. Niketinker has applied for a Class One Lounge retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for infrastructure improvements at Slipping and Donahue Elementary Schools. The project is one hundred percent funded through the Safe Routes, the school program, and the amount is a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and four dollars. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thirteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with Lewis and Associates. This is for performance of a cable vision franchise fee compliance examination for option two, a thirty-five percent contingency fee of the actual recovery, covering a five-year period with a five thousand dollar non-refundable retainer credit against the contingency fee. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This firm has worked for other cities and recovered quite a bit of money, I understand, from some of them, so we, we hope this works out well.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items I would like to present today. First, I would like to present the resolution adopting rates and policies for Twin Bridges Golf Course. I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider that document, that resolution today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this, this just sort of updates our rates and everything at Twin Bridges. As you know, this, the golf course now is under the auspices of the City of Gaston. We no longer have a Billy Casper up there, and there were quite a few changes, or several changes, I should say, that have been made to include prices for corporate membership and family memberships. And I just want to let you know that, and I think Andy's going to follow up with this with a nice article in the Gaston Times.
Billy, are we going to, are we going to produce this in the paper also? Do you know?
I didn't get to the point where we're going to give the rates and everything, but I don't, I don't see why it would be such a bad idea to, to encourage interest in those people who are interested in golfing.
Well, I think, as nice as our golf course is, it puts us on a very competitive edge. I really do. I think it should be, if we could ask whoever we ask to do.
Roger, have a problem with that? Okay, then let it, let it fly, Andy.
Please.
One, one thing I'd like to point out is the, you know, again, one of the benefits that we gained from taking the, the, the golf course under the city umbrella is we, we immediately eliminate the, the fees associated with having Billy, Billy Casper Golf manage that for us. So that's, that's an immediate financial bonus for us, or plus for us. But it's still yet to be determined whether or not this model will work for us, but I think this is definitely a step in the right direction.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And, Mr. President, another item that I would like to introduce, ask for unanimous consent, consent to consider today is a resolution authorizing the release of nine hundred and fifty-six dollars in recorded liens and eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in unassessed grass-cutting charges against property on fifteen Nineteenth Service Street in exchange for three hundred dollars. I would ask for unanimous consent to consider this today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is an example of what we've been preaching for a long time. If a lot becomes vacant next to you, contact the city. And we're practically giving this guy the lot to get it back in a, someone who owns it, will maintain it, and get it back on the tax roll, so. There's, there's value out there if a lot becomes available next to you. Take advantage.
And as I said, this is public record, and this lot is going for three hundred dollars. So if you have property, you know, it'd be well worth your time to buy property, you know, that, that have liens against it, so that you may maintain and that that becomes now back on the tax records.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Department reports, committees, boards, are there any? Citizens request Gertie Low will speak on Manor Day on November the twentieth, two thousand and eleven. You know the drill.
She's been there now.
Give your name and address, leave me your remarks.
To the mayor and city council, and to all those present this morning, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mrs. Gertie Low. I reside at two oh nine Oak Drive in East Gaston, three five nine oh three. I came this morning on behalf of a manor. And when I say manor, a lot of people don't know what manor is unless you say meals on wheels. The director is Mrs. Newann Stokes, and she was to be here this morning, but she lost her father, so I ask that you remember her family in your prayers. But just to give you a little background on manor, it was organized in nineteen eighty-seven by a few citizens here to make sure that there were people that were homebound and sick, not able to cook, that they got a hot, wholesome, nutritious meal. And these meals are delivered from Riverview Medical Center. And my hat's off to Riverview, because all these years, they have prepared the food with their licensed dietitian and their help from their kitchen there. And there's only three part-time employees that actually work for manor. They do a wonderful job, because two hundred and forty meals are delivered from there each day, with just those three part-time people and the help from the kitchen. So my hat's off to those employees as well. Manor is a nonprofit organization, so we operate strictly off of fees that we receive from the United Way, as well as you here in the council, and the mayor of the city, and the community block grant have provided funds for the operation of this, of these, these meals. We have a hundred and seventy volunteers, like myself and the young man standing here with me this morning, Mr. Billingsley, is a retired educator, but he's one of our faithful people that go throughout this city delivering meals. The meals are prepared at the hospital, but once they prepare, they have to get out to the constituents. And if it were not for the volunteers, this would be impossible. So we're asking for your support continuously this morning from the council. We're also asking from our citizens. We have a set aside Sunday, one time a year, which is the third Sunday in November, that we collect funds from churches, sororities, fraternity, or clubs. You may have a club member you belong to, or church Sunday School class, and you decide that I'm going to do something other than exchange gifts this year. You can give a donation to Manor by presenting it to the hospital, or just call Manor's office. Their office number is two five six, five four three, fifty-eight, seven to six, and you can become a volunteer. The meals are three dollars a day. I don't know any place you can go and buy a meal, complete meal, with the meat, three vegetables, a dessert, bread for three dollars. And Riverview has not raised their prices all these years, so again, I say my hat is off to Riverview. So keep Miss Stokes in your prayers, and we have a fundraiser, Mr. Billingsley is going to tell you about our fundraiser that's coming up.
Good morning. My name is Billy Billingsley, and I do deliver these meals. We're going to have a, a hot cake supper. You can eat hot cakes in the afternoon from five until seven, Sunday, November the twentieth, at McDonald's in South Side on Highway seventy-seven. And the tickets are six dollars. I have three left. Of course, the mayor's going to buy two, and I hope the council people will buy one. Even if you don't come, we get money from this to help these people, and sometimes you just, you just have to do some things that you need to do. So if, if anybody needs a ticket, just call me or Miss Low, and we'll get one to you.
But you can also pay at the door when you get there that Sunday. And some of you might wonder whether the name come from manor. When Moses was leading the children out of Israel, they ran out of food, and God fed them with food that rained down from Ohio, and it was called manor. And that's where the name came from. And I've had people ask me, where do you deliver? We have twenty-two routes. We have downtown Gaston, mid-Gaston, east Gaston, Rainbow City, Atala, Nakalula on the Mountain, Alabama City, South Side, Holy Comfort House, Doggett Towers, Princeton Park, Campbell Court, north Gaston, and south Gaston. We have a waiting list right now of a hundred and twenty-five people that would love to have the meals delivered to them, but there is a reason, there's a cost factor. Number one, you have to have, by health regulations, the insulated trays that the food is put in once it's cooked. Those trays are very expensive. They've gone up from forty-five cents to fifty-two cents a piece. Then you got to have the volunteers. And when I say volunteers, we all know the price of gas. Nobody put gas in these people's cars, but they do this out of love for people. The only question that Jesus asked us, did you feed me when I was hungry? Thank you, y'all have a nice day.
Ms. Gertie, Ms. Gertie, I have, Ms. Low? I have a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
How much, and I, I know this is, Manor's been supported by the city for as far back as I can remember, and, you know, you're going, you're going to be hard-pressed to find somebody that's not in favor of supporting this program, but how much do you guys petition the private sector for support for the, for the program?
We only do this once a year, but you can give any time. Your church, we have a lot of churches that give like monthly. It only costs fifteen dollars a week to feed one person, but your church might decide, we want to be a contributor monthly. My church, which is a small church, Mount Zion Baptist Church in East Gaston, we do this monthly. It doesn't take a lot of money. You might say, all we can afford is twenty-five dollars a month, but a lot of twenty-five dollars there. So there's only a chance, so we don't turn it out of anything.
So I see, I see an opportunity for our larger employers to step up, and our churches, you mentioned the churches, so I see an opportunity for them to step up and support this program.
I wanted to ask one question, Ms. Low. Is Jane Clayton still affiliated with your group at Manor?
Very good, very good.
Like I said, we have a hundred and seventy volunteers, we're just one of them. If you would like to be a volunteer, call Louanne Stokes, call the hospital, and ask for Manor Department. Manor, Riverview even provides a office space, pays by telephone. We couldn't do this if we didn't have support for this building. We appreciate everybody's support. Any questions?
It is a very, Manor is a very good program, and we encourage everyone to participate in this to the extent that you can. And on the lighter side of things, y'all didn't see, y'all didn't see Mr. Billingsley's face when she referred to him as a young man, did you?
He's still walking every morning, I'll tell you that.
Okay. Remarks by the mayor and the council? Billy, you want to start?
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank, thank all of you residents of District One and Green Pastures for showing up today. You know, this is an example of, of government working the way it's supposed to work, the way it should work, when people, you know, express a desire, a concern, a sincere concern, and it is addressed and handled and taken care of by, by the people responsible for making those decisions. I, I thank you all for being here today, and now, District One has a, a meeting the third Monday in every month, East Gaston Recreation Center, and maybe we want to see some of these faces over there next time, okay? All right. Okay, and the other thing I would like to say, the only other thing I'd like to say is Veterans Day is, is approaching us, and there are a lot of activities going on, you know, here, in the city, and over the state, you know, and the nation, giving honor to those people who have served and who are serving in our, in our, in our militaries today. First of all, Gaston City High, Ben, Ben will expand on this a lot more, but Gaston City High School will have a program tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. Now, if you can go there, please go, because they have a beautiful program honoring veterans there at, at that facility each year. There are other, other activities going on, but I'll just mention that one, Gaston City High School, because it's such a big one, and it's so, so nice. And when you see a veteran this week, and I'll tell you, nothing, nothing makes a veteran feel better than when someone walks up to him and says, thank you for your service. Nothing makes him feel better, and all the accolades and everything else, but when you say thank you for your service to our country, that really makes a difference in his life. So if you know a veteran, tell him thank you. Tell him or her, thank you for your service. Thank you.
Mr. President, on that, on that line, on the veterans thing, before it goes cold, I would like to expand just a little bit on that part.
Go ahead, you'll be next.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'll start with that then.
You got it.
Eight fifteen in the morning, Gaston City High School, that's when it'll start. All veterans, their spouses, come and see that program. If you're a veteran, you don't have to be told that when you walk in that school and you sit down and they play your music and they talk, it's a feeling that you have. You won't ever regret going. I can guarantee you that, Billy. You've been there, and I think some of y'all have been, in fact, I know y'all have been there. So please go with that. At eleven o'clock in the morning, the Patriot, Gaston Patriot Association will have the luncheon at Convention Hall. At 11 o'clock in the morning, the Gaston Patriot Association will have the luncheon at Convention Hall. There again, it'll be a moving program. It's going to be all music. So anybody who can or wants to come, please do. Tickets are $10, but it goes to the Gaston Edgewall Patriot Association for many, many projects that go back into the community and also back to veterans and their needs. So y'all come on out. We'd appreciate that.
That's lunch too, isn't it?
Oh, yes. The luncheon includes the luncheon. In fact, when you go in the door at 11 o'clock, instead of going and finding a seat, you go right in the chow line and you get fed. And then Mayor Guyton will welcome you, right? You'll be there at 11:15, 11:30. There you go. Okay.
Did you hear that? Chow line?
Chow line? Hey, you're the Veterans Association. And if somebody jumps lying on you, Billy will ride you.
That's right.
No big deal there. You want me to just continue on with my 100 things I got to say?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Number one, we would like, and this is again, we'd like to thank Mike Hilton, who I called last week Mike Lincoln. But anyway, that being said, the flags on Megan Boulevard, on Albert Raines Boulevard, at the courthouse, here at City Hall, at the Lemys Memorial Park on the mountain, you see the flags. And we want to thank Public Works and his, Mike's crew for getting those up for us. They look really good. The second one is to Chief Harbin and to Mayor Guyton. Thank you after how many years we fought to get, y'all did, and with the help you got about Nakalula Park. I'm going to let you say something. We got the, y'all got the special four, I call them special forces. Got them up there. And we're working on the four-wheelers and ATVs and tearing up our trail. And I know now that something's going to be done. And y'all, I do appreciate that. I really do. Keener, I think Sergeant Keener on top of his doing all this for us and his special projects force, well, he was involved in a pretty good little bang-up the other night and survived it. And thank goodness he was. I think he's back out and going very good. So we want to thank him too. I think you're going to say something about the leaf, the leaf thing from there, so we'll jump over that. But Ty and that crew, I mean, they get on it. They're going to have. Chief, I mean, Mayor, here I go with Jack's. Fine eating at Jack's.
Fine cuisine.
But the crew, the leaf crew took a break. And I got to say this. All the people on the mountain that meet in Jack's. When Randy Gladens' crew walked in, it was like whoop, and they all hit him at one time. And I got to say, old Randy handled himself real well. He did a good PR job. When he left, everybody was happy. Now hopefully he follows through and everything will be all right, which I know he'll do without any problem. We covered that WJBY Friday, right? Full gospel music. Anybody in here like gospel music? Country music? That's him right there.
That's him.
Okay. So WJBY is going to be back on air. And last, but and this is sad to me, Barbara Whitley, wife of Ed Whitley, our council advocate, passed away yesterday.
Oh.
Right, Ed. And I believe there'll be a visitation Sunday. There'll be a visitation from Ms. Whitley at Crestwood from 11 to 1 Thursday. And then Beryl will follow. Okay. We did want to say that because she is the wife of Ed Whitley. And Ed Whitley's had a lot of input into that trail and into this council. Okay. Appreciate you, Ed.
Mr. President, may I also inject one, something that Ben covered on about the trail. We also got some good press coverage also from the Gaston Times. There was a good article in the paper, maybe Sunday, and Lisa had written about the concern that we have. And that was also on TV. We're also on TV also 24. Concerning this issue, and it will bring into the public's attention the fact that we have such a problem up there, and it doesn't do anything but help us in the police department and the mayor to get that situation under control. That four-wheelers and off-road vehicles now are not supposed to be in that park. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. So do want to reiterate, and I think Chief Harbin shared this with us earlier, but I think Officer Keener is okay considering. I mean, it was a head-on collision that he experienced. I think most of us saw it in the paper. So again, we, you know, yet another example of how our law enforcement officers put themselves in harm's way for our benefit every day. So again, I appreciate that and wish him a speedy recovery in that regard. Do want to thank those who presented themselves. I, you know, do want to echo Billy's sentiment with the folks in his district and in particular in the Green Pastors area. Always good to see people come out and express their concerns, you know, whether you're for or against the issue. You know, do want to single out my dear friend, Mr. Edwards. You know, you always do a very good job of articulating your points. And I appreciate the manner in which you presented your concerns. I wish, I wish more, more folks would present their issues that way. So I definitely appreciate that. And, you know, I do want to be critical of the process again. I think the city finding out last week, or this council finding out last week and then being called to vote on this issue today is out of bounds. I think that there should have been more. We've had to hear questions and raise questions in this forum. And this is not the forum for that kind of discussion. I really believe there should have been an awareness item, awareness session. There should have been the opportunity for the environmental experts to chime in and address concerns on the part of the city, on the part of the concerned citizens. And at the end of the day, if we got to the same, if we reached the same point, I think, you know, that's fine. But at least folks would have had the opportunity to be informed. So again, and of course, I do want to be mindful of, you know, this is probably not the last we'll hear of a similar concern, whether it be in this district again or another district. There may be an opportunity for us to address this again. And I think we should have a game plan on how we want to address these types of business proposals and how we want to address these types of issues. So I encourage the mayor to address that from that standpoint. And I think we have to give every item that's presented to us its due diligence. And at the end of the day, if it's a no, then it's a no. So I think this council has spoken pretty clearly on how we feel about that and how we respond to the citizens. But again, I would like to see this walk through the process a little bit more deliberately. The last thing I want to mention is that Alabama A&amp;M University is having their Senior Day this Saturday. It's an all-day event. So if you know of any high school juniors and seniors or even any sophomores who are interested in visiting the campus of Alabama A&amp;M, please make them aware of this event. And it's an event that is well-attended each year. So again, we ask anybody that is interested in attending one of our more prominent HBCUs in the state to make sure you attend this Senior Day event on Saturday, November the 12th. That's all I have.
Mayor?
I'd just like to say thank you to all the volunteers at Manor. That's a great program. Y'all do a great job. And you just can't say enough nice things about you. And by the way, I'll take that last ticket you got. I also would like to invite all of you to a birthday party. One of Echo's good friends, Margaret Mitchell, is, her birthday is being celebrated at 1:30. She'll be 111 years old. So at the Center for Cultural Arts, 1:30, you're all invited to a birthday party for Margaret Mitchell.
Are you saying Bob went to school?
I hope I make it. I hope I make it to 111.
Ben told him.
You haven't been down to that exhibit, the Cultural Arts, then you're missing something. That's a great exhibit, a lot of items down there that you'll probably never get to see again. So anyway, birthday party for Margaret Mitchell, of course, the author of Gone with the Wind, 1:30 at the Cultural Arts. Thank you.
Okay, you got it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, I promise. I do want to thank all the veterans that served our country and did everything for us. And I really am appreciative for everything they've done. And like Billy said, if we see one, we need to kind of talk to them and tell them how much we do appreciate them because they've served our country well and they've did a lot for all of us sitting here. I do want to say I appreciate everybody coming today, everybody that talked, everybody that spoke. Your concerns, I think that was all heard through the council here today. I think Mr. Rowe, I think when he got up and he spoke too, he said he actually wanted what the citizens wanted there then. And I appreciate him saying that. You know, it took a, took a big man to say, wanted what the community wanted and what the citizens wanted. And I appreciate you for saying that, Mr. Rowe. I just want to kind of touch on leaf season a little bit. We're out there picking up leaves right now. We've been out there for about two weeks trying to get them up. Seems like the more you get them up, the quicker they fall. Leaf season, we're not going to bag them, as everybody said before, we're not going to do, we're not bagging leaves. We're picking them up the way we've always picked them up in trucks. It works out good like that. Just bear with us. And I always remember, like I always tell everybody, we can't get all the leaves up until they all fall. So just bear with us, and I promise we're going to get them. That's all, Mr. President.
Robert Davis is not here, but he asked that Ivan Nelson, our city clerk, speak for him this morning.
Thank you, Mr. President. He asked me to announce the upcoming District 3 community meeting. It will be held at 5:00 PM on Thursday, November the 17th, at the Carver Community Center. And he wanted me to point out, one of the main topics to be discussed is a proposed rezoning of property on Tuscaloosa Avenue from R1 and B1 to B3. And he asked that everyone come out and take part in the meeting and that important discussion. Thank you.
Due to Veterans Day holiday this week, Thursday's garbage route will be collected on Wednesday, and Friday's route will be collected on Thursday. The other days are the same. I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
Oh, Mayor.
You want something, Mayor?
I know, just, just because I can't vote don't mean I can't talk. Johnny, I just let all mine fall and then get them all up at one time. I just let them keep falling.
If you wait until, wait until the very end when all the leaves are up on there, trees falling on the ground, it's that much better, you know, for you.
Right. I know this has been a long meeting. We've had a lot of important things going on. And I appreciate everybody being here. And I'm about to talk to you for just a couple of minutes about something that there's a lot of misinformation about. And maybe you can hear the facts and relate that to other people when they're wondering what's going on. This keeps sort of showing up with media print from press releases and on radios, et cetera. But I'd like to address a topic about the Civil Service Board from an article that Representative Craig Ford had about board appointees and the process. Let me make it really clear that I have repeated this many times to the citizens of Gaston and legislative delegations since last year. The mayor's office and the city council are not interested really in who appoints the board, the Civil Service Board. If it's the governor, a council member is on the board, or a local legislator, or some fire and police members, all of that's fine. That is not the issue that concerns us. It will always be a political football. The issue for me and the city council is the removal of the fire and police chief from under the Civil Service Board. The mayor and the council passed a unanimous resolution asking the legislative delegation, Senator Williams, Representatives Gallagher, Ford, and Nordgren last year to pass this legislation. I can't understand what their reluctance is. Only two or three other cities in the state have a civil service board, and none of those have the mayor under the civil service board. All the mayors are over all the civil, the fire chief and police chief, except for us. You know, we don't want the police officers and the firemen taken out from under the civil service board. We would never want to see any situation like that. We'd never even consider it. They need their representation, and that's fine. But as it is now, the mayor, who is over all employees, dismisses, if he dismisses a police chief or a fire chief, it could cost thousands of dollars to go to the civil service board, sort of like a trial. If the chief loses in civil service board hearings, according to state law, he has an automatic appeal to Circuit Court if they wish. At that point, it could go on and cost hundreds of thousands of dollars and last for three or four or five years before it's ever settled. It can get put off, it can keep going, it can be continued. You just, when you get into court, if you know about court much, it just goes on and on. There's such a backlog. And, you know, that's what our interest is. I don't think the taxpaying citizens want the money wasted in this manner. This has been an issue for over 20-something years. We have 15 department heads who are under the mayor's supervision. And the two chiefs are not under the mayor's authority. Everybody says, well, they are. You can take them to the civil service board. But why would you have to spend money to do that? If disciplinary actions are necessary on the chiefs, it can cost a lot of money and go on for a long time, as I just said. The police and fire departments combined have a budget of between $19 and $20 million and approximately 250 employees, by far the city's largest budget. If either chief decides not to cooperate with the mayor's office and the council, a lot of money could be spent and a lot of time wasted. To dismiss a department head, which we have 15, you have to have a case and you have to have just cause, like any job. They can't just fire somebody for no reason. The employee still has the right to go to the EEOC or retain legal counsel and file a suit. I have not fired any department heads since being in office. And we are able to communicate daily with all the department heads about problems, management decisions, overtime, financial things, anything that comes up. We can always talk and work things out with the people that's involved. Changing the appointment process of the civil service board will not change anything and is not representing the taxpaying citizens who elected us to be financially accountable and to have the best public safety department in the state. If your car keeps having a flat, and when it does, you change the oil, that's not solving the flat. You know what I'm saying? So changing who appoints the board is not the issue, but it keeps being the political football. This is not a win-win situation for the citizens of Gaston to have a well-run city. In the end, if a chief doesn't want to work with the mayor and council, then he is not held accountable like all the other department heads, no matter who appoints members of the civil service board. Representative Ford and Representative Nordgren represent portions of the city of Gaston. Representative Gallagher has no portions that he represents in the city of Gaston. And Senator Phil Williams represents all of Edgewall County and all the municipalities. These legislators are all friends of mine. However, there is political posturing going on that only concerns the citizens of Gaston. The city councilman and the mayor, all of which live in Gaston, are trying to do the best we can to provide a safe city which runs smoothly for our citizens. So I'm asking the delegation to do what is best for the 36,000-plus people who live in Gaston and quit playing politics with our public safety. There is no reasonable reason that this cannot be done in the next session, which begins in February of 2012. I would ask all the citizens to understand, find out the facts and problems that are there with these large financial expenses the city could incur and the disruption of police and fire chiefs from having a smooth working relationship with the mayor if they decide to, and the council, to help solve problems that occur in our city. This is not about who appoints the civil service board. It's called common sense. Would any of the large plants or businesses that you know of, the plant manager, would he not be able to manage the supervisors? Think about it. I mean, that's what, this is a management thing. If you have somebody who don't want to work with, why should you have to spend money to get things straightened out? We encourage the delegation to please pass this bill to improve our overall cooperation with the citizens to make our cities safer. Thank you, and I'd appreciate your help on that. Thanks.
I entertain a motion. We adjourn. The seat is adjourned.